Hello, can you all hear me? This is John with Grace A. Bear.
John, they can hear you, but it'll be a few minutes before.
Sure, okay, great. Hey Brian, I'm asking you a question. Can you find out if there's any special like front end documents for specifications that the police jury wants us to use? Where you know, for example, insurance limits and all contractual stuff that they might want in the documents.
Yes.
What's the document?
The the front end documents, follow up.
That's fine.
We'll we'll catch you here in a minute, John, when we go live.
Alrighty. Just remember I have till probably about 25 minutes and I have to leave for another meeting.
Okay, alright. Just hang tight for a second.
We'll call the Honored Special Meeting of the Association Parish Police Juror for Wednesday, August 20th. Let the record reflect that absent at this time are Mr. Patero, Ms. Matherne, Mr. Alcorn, and Mr. Carter. We'll start off with a prayer followed by a pledge. God who teaches us by sending the light of the Holy Spirit into our hearts, grant that by the light of that Spirit, right judgment may be ours that will verify and join his guidance. Amen.
Pledge, please.
Public comment at this time, we accept public comment for any item on the agenda.
I think what we're gonna do guys, just so everybody knows, is we're gonna try to buzz through the items that were on the email. The President will provide some extra detail as well as some of the administrative. The president will provide some extra detail as well as some of the administrative officials. And then we'll allow for you all to kind of engage in that conversation. If at any time you want to jump in the discussion, I'm gonna try to keep it as informal as possible. Being that this was the only room we could house everybody, this would just kind of, the structure I know isn't the most convenient. But feel free to jump in if you have anything to add or any questions that we're not providing detailed information on. Okay, thank you all.
Second call, last call. Let the record reflect, no public comment. Alright, so our next item is discussed courthouse renovations. Don't know if, should I go through the email?
If you don't mind, because you know it just as well as everybody else, just to bust through where we are with the financials in terms of anticipated and received funds. And then what the scopes are and then kind of what the plan is moving forward.
Okay. So the the funding that we already have in place is the one hundred thousand from the gap that's been allocated from the jury for the courthouse. And also there's been a hundred thousand dollars appropriated from the one percent fund for the same project. This is the project that currently Grace A Bear Architects has. And I believe, Brian, if you can help me, I'm gonna think their timeline for delivering plans is end of this month.
Hey John, you online?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Okay, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I can.
Alright, so John, can you can you let us know for the the first phase that we discussed about repairing the the sewage issues and the bathroom renovations, what what's the timeframe of receiving those plans?
Well, we have a review set into y'all for review and in two weeks from Monday, we will have be ready to go out to bid for a hundred percent construction documents and specifications.
Okay, you have the anticipated construction costs for that?
Uh, not 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 at this time, just the original one that I had provided. I can send you that again after this meeting and then we're working on estimating right now.
Okay, so the next allocation of funding that we have is from the Resilient Communities Infrastructure Program. That is for the purposes of of repairing any structural damage that was created by the water intrusion and also insect damage in the courthouse. For that phase or the allocated funding, we have is eight hundred and eighty five thousand fourteen dollars and eighty five cents. We did have Grace A Bear conduct an evaluation. They did some I guess some light demolition to get to some certain areas of it to get what the the extent of the damage. And Paul, can you have that updated estimate? It was around six hundred?
There, yes, it was a little short of six hundred thousand dollars, but the total grant is for, right, it said low over eight fifty. We've, where we are right now, that grant is we've we're applying for RFQ for engineering design. And that's that's been advertised, it came out yesterday was the first day it was advertised and on September eighteenth, we're gonna open those bids for RFQs for engineering and design for that that project. That's where we have with that.
Okay, and so from a budget standpoint, the estimated repair cost was probably about sixty five to seventy percent of the the funds that we have available.
Yes, that leaves available funds for.
If there was a big asterisk, right, there was a big asterisk in there saying that they expect that they're gonna find more once they get deeper into the building. So I fully expect that those repairs are gonna see that that the full amount that we have available there, if not.
That's a stairwell, probably replacing stairwell in the front, probably that's gonna be changing out all the all the windows, making them more weather weather resistant. And it's gonna be involving also probably the tile work in the in the in the ceiling of the second of the courthouse. So it's gonna be mainly to mitigate water damage that was caused by the hurricanes.
What should RFQ date do?
On September eighteenth, two two P M. At my office, we'll be opening the bids for RFQs.
Alright, and the the next source of funding that we have for discussion is the hazardous mitigation grant program. And this was related to Hurricane Ida, and this is a competitive grant for the total of five million for a new O E P office, nine one one center and safe room to be constructed at the former site of a Baris Chevrolet. Paul, you have any updates?
Yeah, well, that that grant is four million, six hundred and fifty eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And I'm just receiving emails as we speak about some more R F Is that's requested from the state. And that's requesting information regarding the project. It was in review, but not asking for more, so I'm at the, I've I've been getting assistance from G I S on this. So I'm gonna have to get with them after this meeting and see if we can satisfy those R F Is. So it's it's a never ending process to provide the R F Is. Once we get past that, we provide them all of the deliverables we need to provide them with. They'll come back and give us a construction date, but we not to that point yet. It could be another year or two before that even happens.
But we do have a conceptual design, correct?
Yes, we do.
And can that be released, Paul, or do we have to wait on that? Um, has that been shared with the with the sheriff and and other parties, or is that is that just been embargoed for the time being?
That's is, I I've shared a little bit with the sheriff, but I hadn't, I sent it, G I S, they composed it for me and I I sent it to Go Set, but I hadn't released it out to the, it's not, you know, it's not permitted yet, Mike, so that's why I really don't want to release it to the public yet.
Understood.
Okay. But at the end of the day, it is an application. We ain't got, you'd ask for more information, so.
They continue, we we be, they're engaging me for more information, so we still providing the the deliverables we need to provide to get the in the grant, the grant application process. It's an ongoing thing. You think when you provide all the information, they come back and want more information, so I'm at the mercy. I use I use a portal. I'm not really talking. There's a young lady that sent me the R F I and I deal, I sent all my information through the grants portal with Go Set. So I'm not dealing with it by specific that you can talk to, except the little young lady that's asking for the R F Is.
Do y'all have a grants coordinator, or y'all are just doing the in-house, submitting the grant application?
No, we have a grants coordinator for that one, for the, I think that's the south central plan and.
No, not that one. G I S, I've asked for assistance. That one, I'm handling myself, but I'm getting assistance from G I, from Grant, I ship your G I S has assisted me on that one with some of the deliverables. Specifically, a benefit cost analysis and those type of things that I have no experience with. So I'm leaning on them and they've been very helpful. I'm sorry, it was the R C I P that you asked, when that one's south central plan and development, correct?
Before we go too far, excuse me. Item number one. For the third time in five days, the toilets have overflowed again in the assessors office. It's been going on for years. Does item number one address that problem at all?
It's supposed to, and that's why, so the original proposal that I met with Grace A Bear with was a cosmetic fixing of the bathrooms. And I put a stop on it because so that doesn't fix the problem that we have that's in the floor and in the walls and going out to the sewer. So that's when we had to hire another firm to come in, do an evaluation of it. They sent a camera down it, got that scope, worked with Grace A Bear, they identified the scope of what needs to change, so yes, that is what's supposed to be fixed in this first phase.
Jamie, were you out there this evening when the maintenance guys got there?
Yes.
Did you see anything that?
From what I see, Cat, the problem, and Brian has the drawing, I'm sure you're more than welcome to see it. There's a sag in in the line from your offers, your office going to the next clean out. There is a sag in the line. It looks to be approximately five inches. There must, Cat. We're gonna make sure that they clean out the line to the street, all the way back to your office today.
So that's where the problem's coming in at.
So is that gonna be addressed?
Yes, this is everything that's on this paper, that's in that, in that scope of work.
The assessors office, the the ceiling in the assessors office, when you remove a tile, rats, skeletons, debris falls from that. That ceiling has to be changed. If y'all can't do it, I'm gonna get somebody to come in and give us an estimate on changing the lighting and changing that ceiling. I have ladies in the office who are getting bronchitis, who are getting different respiratory illnesses. And it's it's no doubt coming from that atmosphere in the top. Whenever somebody comes to work on a light and they move it, feces, skeletons fall from this. That ceiling in the assessors office has to be changed. There's no doubt about it.
Brian, you have anything to, any plans or anything?
Never plan to change all the ceiling tiles out and remove that, but it's a floating ceiling, so obviously some items are gonna be up there, but.
We we are no doubt gonna have to close the office when this is done.
Correct.
It's not gonna happen overnight. It's gonna take several days to change the lighting. The lighting in there has been there for a hundred years. Every now and then we smell smoke.
So we have recently converted all that to L E D lights.
Very few of the lights have been converted whenever there's trouble. That has to be changed. When you change the ceiling, we need to change the lighting in that office.
Right, didn't they have a separate grant that somebody was working on for the lighting fixtures separately? I think Justin at one point had walked through with somebody and then I don't, that was a couple years ago.
There's probably an energy grant, I'm not sure.
We have a hole in the ceiling in the kitchen where the water comes in that that we catching with a bucket. We got a humidifier, a dehumidifier sitting in the office that we empty every day. The temperature in the courthouse compared to the temperature above the ceiling is causing the dampness, the mold that I had on my computer three months ago and prior to that.
Right.
Yes.
When there was a walkthrough that was done with some folks and walking through to see if the courthouse can be repaired, renovated and all this other stuff. Was was any of the, or any of these items that Mr. Blanchard was talking about?
I don't know. I don't know. That was all brought to their attention.
That's the other phase of it, to to redo. Yeah.
This is not new information that he's saying.
Yeah, it's gonna be included in there.
This is my first time hearing stuff like that.
It's gonna be included, but that was the other phase of it, but we wanted to address the sewer first.
Well, I know the sewer was the main thing.
Right.
What I'm hearing is there's more to it.
The architects walked, we walked the whole building, top floors, bottom floors.
Yeah, I went in every office.
We went in all the offices, we had to.
You know, y'all, enough is enough. I mean, when my employees start getting sick because of them having to come to work in a supposedly safe environment, it's it's time to do something. It's past time.
Brian, to reiterate what Ron's question was, when those guys came to do the assessments, I don't recall them coming in our office. I know they went in certain areas that were like they already had obvious termite damage and water damage, so they they made holes where it was already, there was visual repairs that needed to be made, but I don't think they went, I know they didn't go in any walls or interior spaces in my office.
No, we didn't, we didn't bust that out. We busted the critical areas that we could see infiltration at that.
Starting, we're starting to interfere with the with the public being able to execute the duties and the and the information that they need that we supposed to be able to give them. When we have to close because toilets are running over, we're not doing them any justice either. It really makes us look bad, y'all. This is supposed to be the centerpiece of our parish. This is where people come to do business. They go to the clerk's office, they go to the registers office, they come to the assessors office. And it's getting to the point, and they come in and say, what's that smell? Oh, well, we kind of used to it, you know, it's probably some dead rats upstairs. But that's what we're up against, and we see it every day. And I mean, it gets, it is, I'm I'm terribly excited right now, and I'm very sorry to be like this, but it's time for the talk to be over with. We need action. I'm sorry, y'all.
We need money, Cat.
We, y'all have to find the money, Jamie, I realize that. You know, y'all, this is not the only place in Louisiana that don't have money. But it's one of the few places you gotta go to 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 see this kind of workplace conditions. I've been to several courthouses and I'm sure y'all have too.
Cat, one of the reasons why we're here today is for funding and to give y'all an explanation of what funding we got coming down the pipe. And the plan is working. We slow, I guarantee you. Government is slow, we real slow, but it's happening, and that's why we're here today discussing. We got a hundred thousand dollars for subsurface drainage and sewage and restroom improvements, another almost eight hundred eighty five thousand dollars that we're doing for.
That should cover the problem in the assessors office.
Yeah, I mean, I I hear you complaining and I appreciate you complaining, but we are here to address this.
Well, I appreciate you listening.
We listen aloud clear, we've been listening, but we can't do nothing when you have to checkbook. So we working on it. We we dedicated to doing it, and it's gonna happen. The ball is rolling. It's slow, but it's sure. That's all I can tell you. Appreciate your patience and we gonna get it. We want it right. We love this old courthouse.
So what's the step after the RFQ? Because I did see that it was advertised on the itinerary. It says it should be advertised shortly. I did see that it went in this week's paper. So then what after that?
So after the the September eighteenth deadline, the jury will have a scoring committee and the following meeting will award whatever architect firm is chosen through that RFQ process and then they will they will.
They'll evaluate the.
Right, we need to build it and then make it.
The the problem that we have with whenever we get to our, the R C I P, those are federal funds, and I think O C D is handling this one, right? It's through O C D. Every step that we do has to go through O C D.
Correct.
And there's nothing that O C D does fast. I'm just telling you now, we got we got several grants that we meet with them and we have to encourage them to meet with us more than once a month. And that's just a voice call. Uh, so it's there, but we need this step to be able to move forward, to submit to O C D. Here's our RFQ, here's the architect that we select, and then they have to approve us to move forward.
But just to understand, though, the actual money of the grant has been approved. It's just going through the process at this point in time?
That money, that eight hundred and eighty five thousand dollars is guaranteed to Assumption Parish for the R C I P program. The jury voted to allocate a hundred percent of that funding to the courthouse.
So the first three bullet points, Judge Martin, those are all fully funded. That's monies that is coming, but we're in the process of working through those particular agencies in order to make it feasible so that we can start the projects. The same, the the five million is the one that's in the till, which is not guaranteed. We've only put in an application, which is still in review. And that application was submitted, which is why I put the date on the on the on the paperwork. That was back in two thousand twenty three. So that goes to show, and and that's why I put these dates, dates, folks, so you are aware, this isn't something we've been sleeping on. This is all information that's been submitted and we've just been waiting to hear back. And every time we wait to hear back, we get more requests for information. And then we're put, you know, two two steps forward, three steps back.
So the money for one and two are in the bank and it's just to go out to bids at this point in time and do the work?
Trying to get all the design through through those particular projects and make sure O C D approves everything we want to do on.
O C D has to approve the.
Not on one and two.
One and two are good. The 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 third one is the one I was referring to.
I guess I'm looking at one and two, and I know y'all talking about phase one is the sewer and the, I guess, subsurface infrastructure and bathroom renovation. Does that have to pony into the money of three or is one and two?
No, separate, separate.
Well, that's what I I just asked him if he had the construction cost for it so that we know if we're a hundred percent funded, but he doesn't have that yet.
That's the guy on the phone that.
That's the architect that's on the phone.
Alright, so as soon as y'all get the design, you can go out for bids and then work and get started on.
That's right, and if we need to allocate additional funding for this, we'll just have to see, you know, once we get that construction estimate, we have to allocate it before we can go out to bid. We have to be fully funded before we can advertise a bid, so, oh, I it sounds like by the end of the month, we'll have that, a couple weeks or maybe into September.
My question might be getting a little forward ahead. My my question is, because we talking about doing the sewer, we talking about doing the restrooms, how is that gonna affect the courthouse operation? Are we going to have to look to move port and those operations somewhere else in order to be able to accommodate this work? Obviously, when we get to the eight hundred eighty five thousand and we pull the front stairwell out, we gotta go somewhere else, because I don't see a farm market allowing us to have a port upstairs. So we gotta have a plan in place as this starts going. I mean, if you if you're working on a sewer and you don't have restrooms. we gotta have a plan in place as this starts going. I mean, if you if you're working on a sewer and you don't have restrooms and all, do we need to look at moving at that point? How long? Where do we move to? Have any of that discussion been?
No, that's, I mean, that'll be, John, do you have anything to add for that? Cause that's really, the architect has to guide us on that.
Well, I think that the, uh, sewer project, only thing that's gonna be impacted would be parking. You're gonna have to redirect some parking. Um, for the restrooms renovation, when that goes, only the thing will be just the restrooms, so you have to do it for that. Now, for the large eight hundred, yeah, you're gonna have to probably, uh, work on finding another place and relocating a lot of the staff and a lot of the public. Because your main means of egress, possibly both, could be under construction.
John, about how long would you expect that to be? I mean, cause if we have to look and find a place for a month or we gotta find it for six months, that makes a difference.
Uh, it, well, our initial assessment was just for the design and study, some proposed solutions on fixing the problem. So once you have an architect on board that's gonna answer this bid that you have, um, they're gonna actually design the solutions. But I would think construction would be at a minimum of four months and a maximum about eight months, between four to eight months. However, the actual demolition of those stairs can be isolated within that timeframe. So I would expect maybe two months of having it relocate while work is being done. And and that's me giving this based on general construction knowledge from the past and not knowing the details of what the actual uh, solutions are gonna be by the architect that gets the job.
And we we keep talking about the restroom renovations. What restrooms are being renovated? Is it those downstairs in the main hallway or is it all of them?
It's all of them, upstairs and downstairs.
So when you're working upstairs and renovating those restrooms, you're not gonna be able to have. So again, at that timeframe, we're gonna have to have somewhere that we can provide security to that court. I I'm just putting it out there. We're moving this along, but we have those things that we're going to have to figure out where, you know, always we had discussions of the community center. Uh, judges are here. They've had court in a small courtroom. It really doesn't work for that, for criminal court. You know, then there was, you know, there was discussion, do we go somewhere else? There's a cost factor involved in that if you do that. So I think there's some more discussion that really needs to be happening with that, especially since this is moving forward.
And maybe, John, you can add, but most of that discussion is gonna be after the contract is awarded at the pre- the pre-construction meeting with the contractor, correct?
Um, for that large project, yes. Uh, large projects that impact the interior, yes. Um, it's also good, but there can be things put in place during the design of that project that makes the contractor phase it into certain ways that can be coordinated with where y'all wanna move and how how many people y'all wanna move.
No, I would, I would disagree a little bit with that kind of best, cause if we know what's going to happen, we can start identifying location and where we're going to go now. We don't have to wait to the construction part so that, I I I mean, I think that's something that we can start having those discussions now and figure out where we're gonna go. Lengthwise, yes, the construction pays. They would have to tell us it's gonna be four months, six months, eight months, whatever. But we can decide now. We know it's gonna be four to eight months, estimated. Where do we go from four to eight months? We can start doing that now because there's gonna be things that's gonna have to be put in place in order for that to operate properly. So we know it's coming, so there's no reason that we can't identify a location, start looking what we need to do for security. Make sure the judges are comfortable with that to hold court. I mean, those are things we can do now. We just need to start moving. It's my opinion. I mean, that's, you know, y'all decide that too, that's fine. I I'm just saying, I think.
No, I I don't disagree with you. I just, until we get the plans from the architect, we really don't know what they're doing right now, you know, and.
Would you agree that the front staircase is gonna be ripped down?
For the big renovation, yes.
Okay.
But I'm talking for the small, the 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 bathroom renovation.
If you have no restrooms in a public building, can you bring the public in?
I don't think it'll be no restroom.
No, we can supply trailers or something.
You know?
You do have a mobile trailer with air conditioning that you can do restroom with that. But they probably gonna do, when they do upstairs bathrooms, they probably have the downstairs bathroom working.
That's part, kinda part of the phasing that's gonna take place where we dictate the contractor. Only work on, you have completely finished the first floor before you finish the second or vice versa, and you move people up there.
You got one on the drainage before you work on the first floor.
Cat, that's the first thing on the list.
The first thing.
I don't want it to drain.
Is is this?
Yeah, Sheriff, they they could be working on that now to try to secure a place for this to take place once it begins.
Is this room not sufficient for court?
It would be difficult if you don't mind.
What if we add to use it?
Do a jury of one year in here. I mean, we could handle some, some other things, but, um, what the sheriff is is talking about, um, the number of people that we have, and particularly if we have a jury trial. It'd be very difficult, almost impossible to conduct it in here. They don't have a jury box. Um, and when he's talking about security, you know, we bring the prisoners up those back stairs now and they come and they say, where you at, Judge? And they lock me in a room while prisoners come up. We can handle that. But, um, I think his point's well taken in terms of handling anything other than maybe just very, very simple, but like bringing somebody in for an arraignment or something like that.
Just to piggyback on what John's and what the sheriff's saying. Leroy, I understand your position of honestly, until we know what's being done and we have a timeline, we can't answer that. But realize that from the court's perspective, our calendar's set probably a year and a half out now. And we're giving notices to people six months out to come back to court. At some point in time, we're gonna have to identify where is court gonna be held, at least know a rough time period of when this is gonna happen so that we can plan, hey, if, you know, when Aaron sends out notices, it may say, well, did the courthouse report to the police jury chambers on such and such date? So it's not just, just knowing our end that two weeks notice of, hey, we're gonna start next month. It's probably not gonna be sufficient. It's gonna need to be probably, you know, at least five, six months out ahead. Otherwise, Sheriff, you're gonna be reserving everybody in every division for a new location. So starting out there.
I'm just gonna make everyone aware of one more issue with using this room. Remember the other day I went upstairs, the AC wasn't working for some kinda reason. Aaron was in the little courtroom. Nobody knew about it. So we had to come in here, and my court reporter got all set up, and she said, there's no way we can have court in here. She said unless everybody does not say one word the entire time, like the court reporter couldn't hear. So it worked out great. Aaron finished her hearing, and then we marched all of our people to the little courtroom. But I don't know if that would be an issue for everyone's court reporter. I assume they all use the talking method now and not, I haven't seen any of them. They may, I don't know y'all's may, but mine doesn't. And she said she couldn't hear well enough to take down all of the information in here. Why? I don't know. I'm just telling you that was an issue for me.
And especially, uh, especially with like products, like FDR recording devices that I don't know if y'all have with the court reporters you use. That would be something that we probably would need to check into and see that. I know the courtroom has. I don't know if this building has, or could it be moved or not? That's.
Is that something maybe Justin can help us out with?
I would think we could move that equipment. Obviously, we'd wanna take everything out of there while they under construction, so potentially we could work with Steve and and Justin and see. But we don't have that equipment in here already.
Sheriff, did you say the community center would not work?
No, I didn't. We had discussions about using possibly the community center. I'm just saying that if we do opt to use the community center, then I think the judges need to go take a look at it. We need to look at it from a security standpoint.
Wouldn't it work on?
If you have a jury, you know, if you have a jury that has to come in, where do we put them? Do you have, where do they go deliberate? I think we need to look at those logistics, and we could do that now if the idea is, let's use the community center. We can start looking at, look at the pros and cons of it and then come back and say, well, in order to make it work, we need to do this or we need to do that. I don't think we need to wait six months down the road and say, oh, well, now we got a contractor. Well, let's go see if it's gonna work. I don't think we need to, I think there's some late work we could do now in in preparation of that.
Just a thought. We have a school sitting here now that I don't think have any students.
No, they do have students.
Is it possible that?
They use.
Alternative school is there.
Alternative school and people are praising that. Possible upstairs.
Not be able to bring inmates on the grounds of student.
The issue with the community center, center that we have to be mindful of is as as far out as this may go, and we don't know. We have rentals on the books already that could impact.
How does it impact?
Yeah, and the timing is the unknown.
Do we need the front part of the community center? Do we use the gym hall? Is that a better, you know? I I mean, there's, there's options. We just, I think we really need to get and have those discussions about those options and looking at.
To have a little bit more planning in place. Agreed, agreed. And look, ain't gonna be the best case scenario, Judges. You follow me? You know, we're gonna be under construction several months. Ain't gonna be the perfect facility, but we gonna try to accommodate as best we can.
Another facility that may be an option would be the agricultural warehouse.
True.
So it's an open area with separate offices. You can have the prisoners come one way. There's multiple entrances on different sides. It's just something that maybe we'll take a walk through and see.
Do, does it have to be in Assumption Parish? If we hold court here, do we have to be here in Assumption?
Uh, not, you can, um, so the precedent that comes to mind with that be was after Katrina and after the floods. There were certain courthouses that were damaged, and, you know, while those were repaired, uh, we probably have to go to Supreme Court and get some kind of, uh, proclamation from them or something that allows us. But we could probably, you know, get a neighboring courthouse who willing to help us.
I'm just thinking maybe the courthouse in Donisonville, I know it's not used very often.
A possibility, possibility, yeah.
And then one of the things I have to talk to Sheriff Falcon and Sheriff whoever was that, what deputies would be, you know, providing security since the courthouse is where we moved in Ascension Parish courthouse or wherever, what deputies would have jurisdiction because would Sheriff Falcon be able to send some of his deputies to Ascension without having them deputized there or vice versa? So that was one of the things we had talked about that I guess is another unknown at this point, Tom.
Yeah, I wouldn't suspect that that would be that big of an issue, though. I know he's had outside agencies come in and help in assumptions, so.
He just hasn't gotten brought up. I'm sure that's an easy process to do it, but it's just one of the.
It's another part of the logistics, right?
Right.
So, uh, I don't, I guess, is John, John disconnected?
Yeah, he said he had another meeting. Uh, he could only be on for twenty-five minutes.
Cause I I'd just like to, I think we not have to have him involved in this planning just to kinda give us an idea of what can be structured in certain ways to know when it's absolutely necessary to relocate. Uh, if he's not involved, I I don't know anybody up here, you know, I don't think Brian would know.
No.
Uh, you know, it's not just duration. It's just to say, is it possible, yes or no, from a construction standpoint? We need that design professional to be able to help us with that.
Just keep in mind, if you don't mind, if we do get permission to to move venue jurisdiction into another parish, they're probably gonna give us a limited time. You know, it's not gonna be a, an open ended date.
Sure.
So the more information that we have, the better, obviously, but we'll we'll work on that. Y'all don't worry about that kind of thing. If we need your help, we'll ask for it, but we'll look into the jurisdictional issues. We'll look into those security issues with the sheriffs. And we're here to help and cooperate, Mr. Nocken. We're not a bunch of primadonnas.
I know.
We're here to help and to offer our assistance. That's why you've got us all here today.
Yes, right.
We're not here to fuss and fight. We're here to help, uh, to the extent that we can, offer our assistance where we can, and, uh, we're committed to doing that.
I know it's not easy to get y'all's schedules to be able to all be in the same place at one time.
We all took off to come see.
Yeah, we wanna show how important this is for us because it the, it's getting, it's getting to a condition and a point where we can't hold port properly or safely. And, you know, at that point, we are gonna have to step in and do something, you know, obviously, we wanna work with y'all and.
Sure.
We understand the constraints y'all are under, and, uh, so we just, you know, we wanted to be here to be a part of the discussion and show how important and how dire things are getting, but.
And and just understand, the jury understands that importance. That's why all, Mr. Bro had to take off of work today to make sure we're here. You know what I mean? So that's why we're here during the day to make sure that this happens, so I think we're all here for the same reason. Um, I don't, as far as for renovations on this courthouse, um, any other questions, concerns, or do we have time wise on that one?
I just had a question, um, regarding our flooring and where it would fall in this because we we've been having water damage. When it rains, it rains in my office in several different places. We've had, uh, I think they've been able to kinda contain that by sealing the windows upstairs, cause that's how water was getting in. But over the the years, it's been continuous water damage to the floors to the point where I had an employee who tripped. And so it's a safety issue in my office as well. Where would flooring fall into that? Is it the?
In the RCIP section.
Okay, so we talking years down the road? Possibly.
No, the.
That's the third.
Years.
The third. It may be a couple.
Could be years down the road.
We're not gonna promise y'all six months from now.
No.
So I'm just throwing this question out, and maybe this is a, a mic question, um. If we were to replace the flooring, is that something that we could, as an office, like if if I were to get renovations and repairs done on my own, is that something that could be reimbursed once the funding is secured or it has to be?
Not on a federal side.
You can't incur any cost until the grant is awarded.
Oh, what was that?
You can't incur any cost until the grant is awarded to seek reimbursement.
Not even just awarded, but documents executed.
But Brian, you're aware of the the area that she's.
We just walked in, heard about. We just walked in, what, about an hour ago, was there? We walked through the office. So we were talking about, previously, we had got some costs associated with a few people in the area. But it, we, they moved some cabinets, so we're gonna have to replace that also. It does need to be replaced. It's bugging the type of.
Just to clarify, we moved the shelving because we were told we were gonna get new flooring, so we made a plan to move the shelving before the flooring was installed, and then the flooring never got installed. So we have duct tape in a large section of our criminal department that's been there for years. Again, water damage on top of that, so it's just gotten worse instead of.
So y'all moved the cabinets years ago?
Yes, because we were told that we would get new flooring installed after the the water, after the flooring was damaged from the water. Um, I was asked to go and get a quote from a flooring company, pick out flooring, and we did all of that, and then.
You don't think? Brian, when you do the walkthrough, can you come to my office and we'll look at the flooring in the kitchen?
So it didn't need to change.
Okay.
The roof actually.
Yes, sir. There was a lot of things that trans, that took place and all of that, so.
But we have tape holding down the thresholds when you walk in and somebody tripped the other day. It was somebody in the public that entered through the back, not knowing where they were going, and that person tripped, so.
Again, y'all, not to, not to complain and throw all of this at you, but just so that I wanna make sure you're all aware. Cause I know I've had conversations with some of you individually, just while we're all here talking about it, I just wanna make sure we bring it to the table. My concern as a lawyer is the safety issue, um, you know, my boy's tripping and and different things like that, so. And just so that we have a a plan and for for those important things for us individually in our offices. So it's not just the courtrooms. It's not just, you know, it's.
Not painting the bathrooms or anything like that.
Well, that's why I asked, that's why I asked Brian the question. I know we looking at infrastructure, um, all the way around the board for the courthouse. But when you talk about things coming from the ceiling, now you're talking about carpet. That's why I asked the question, was all these other items addressed when we did the walkthrough with?
It'll be in the bigger, in the bigger, in the larger portion of the ground.
Is it, that's my question. Is it in there?
It will be addressed in the larger portion.
What are you calling the larger?
That's what we discussed. The RCIP.
The RCIP, not the four million.
The nine hundred thousand.
But I think we're gonna.
But that only goes so far.
But we're gonna have to make some repairs, right?
It's only because we don't know the timeline of when RCIP is coming, so I would say that we probably need to do sufficient repairs for, you know, a two to three year timeframe.
And one of the things that happened with the flooring contractors, they wanted a contractor to do all of our flooring in every building, or they wasn't gonna do the floor.
But go to someone else.
We are. But we'll move on it.
Move on it.
I was told it was an insurance, but regardless, it's just, you know, to keep the lines of communication open so that we know where we stand and what the plan is to have some of these dire things. we know where we stand and what the plan is to have some of these dire things repaired and, and fixed.
No. Just to make sure y'all aware of the things that we think need to be fixed because of safety problems or safety reasons.
All right, we dealing with a very, very old building over there. We got a beautiful building across the bay here. I know we probably won't go that route. We need to look at that building, look at using that entire building. If we gotta move everybody out of the courthouse for the time being until we get this thing repaired or get a new one built or whatever. I mean, if we got some rentals booked, that block it out for a certain timeframe and after that we do no more rentals. But if we can use that building across the bay here and satisfy everybody, let's go that route instead of having people going through what they going through right now.
Your biggest loss is gonna be school board.
School board gotta put their own.
Well, you would think, right?
No, I, I think the, the way we move forward, have Brian, with the walkthrough that was done, but meet individually, get the items that need to be replaced, the ceiling tiles, the lights, the floors. Get a contractor in here, get us a cost estimate, see if we can find some funding to get that done in the short term that we're not tied to one of these other projects, that we can pull the trigger quick. I mean, we, we shouldn't need to have an architect to be able to do this.
Yeah.
I, I mean, this is just, it's more than what our maintenance guy can do and it's less than a big renovation project. But whenever we're pricing it, we're pricing it for a short term fix. We're not looking for a twenty year floor. You, you know what I mean? That should be reflected in the price. So we're looking at something to fix these issues that are, I mean, the, the ceiling tile, having the, the skeletons above the ceiling tile and all of that. I'm sure all of that insulation will have to be changed, the ceiling tile will be changed.
There is any insulation.
But the frame's gonna be fine, you know, so we just need a contractor to give us a price to do that. Now, I'm sure if it's like that on that side, the hall is the same thing on the other side of the hall. So it's gonna be identifying that scope of work and getting some contractors in here to give us some prices, see if we have to go out to bid or, you know.
We definitely gotta go off a bid. You just putting a bandaid on it. If we can use the building across the bay here, let's take a look at it, see if we can fit everybody in there, put petitions up, whatever we gotta do. And we can use that building, that use that building until we get this building totally repaired or a new building.
You talking about years, Chris?
Well.
I just don't think the logistics of that works with, with the, the types of services that they're providing here in the courthouse. I mean, y'all can't just pick up and go across the bay here for two years. I, I wouldn't think. I mean, you have all of your records and everything here.
Take a look.
I know, I mean, other parishes have had to go through this. I've talked to a couple of other clerks. Um, I think Point Coupie is one that comes to mind. They're currently, their courthouse is currently under construction. Is it ideal? No, but, you know, I, I don't think they had any, I don't, and I don't know all of the ins and outs of the details of what their situation was, um, but I know they had to move to a warehouse type, um, building in order to conduct court and have the clerk's office for sure, possibly the registrar's office, um.
I think St. Charles had to do that for the height too, their entire courthouse.
This is a better solution than having somebody get sick, somebody get hurt. It's gonna be inconvenient, but you come out better doing it that way. Somebody fall, your friends would've lost them. Somebody gets sick, they sue you, you have nothing to stand on.
Just, just curious, the funding for this addition here to Charlie, and where did that come from? Was that some kind of grant or something? Was it a, a, a lump sum grant that provided for it, or was it some kind of millage or something over time, or how did y'all get to this point?
It's a disaster recovery class.
Twenty-six million, I think we had gotten, something like that.
You'd have made it a disaster, Judge, to get that kind of money.
Well, kinda, I mean, that kinda goes back to, uh, Mike and I had this conversation and Leroy and I did too. And, uh, just from my years of doing what Mike did in parish government, look, a good grants coordinator or a good lobbyist or somebody is probably worth their weight in gold and go and find money. Have y'all ever looked into finding, you know, the right person? Look, y'all ain't the first person that needs rehabilitation of a courthouse or rebuilding a courthouse. There's gotta be somebody out there who's been through this process and can probably guide on the steps of how to do it and where to go look for money and, you know, what legislative funds are available, capital aid or whatever, what can you tap? You know, but I don't think any of us in this room probably have enough knowledge to, to get to that point.
We tap into capital aid, we tap into all those sources already. The biggest problem we're starting to encounter now, there, there's no more free money. So everything requires a match. So anything we, we get, we have to come back to the table and find a match. So to, to reconstruct a courthouse, millions of dollars, we need hundreds of thousands of dollars for a match. We don't have it.
So what did, what did?
I, I agree with the match, Ken, uh, but I know that myself, I know Aaron and Kat, we've had conversations about assisting with matching funds, assisted jury to get to that point. I'd say we wanna cover everything, but we are willing to actually contribute into that to assist the parish to improve. And so I, I mean, that in mind, then I don't know what I missed when I.
Say that a lot of judges.
No, I get it. And, and I know y'all would contribute. You follow me? We got a ten million dollar facility. We need two hundred and fifty thousand or, or two point five million. We go to y'all. It might be up to y'all if, to make or break the deal. Otherwise than that, it might not ever happen.
Yeah, exactly. You know, and, you know, and the property, I mean, y'all know about the property, Ken, y'all.
That's a high kind contribution, so that worked.
That is what is there for, that actually can be used toward match. You know, and if, if it's a matter of, well, it gotta be transferred to the parish to use it for match, that's what we do. Uh, but it was bought for the parish. It was not bought for the sheriff's.
We're not gonna stop pursuing the money because of a match. You follow me?
Yeah.
We gotta.
And then we'll work that part out.
We'll work that part out, you know?
On the grant that, that Paul has been working on, I know you act if he, and he has been keeping me up to date with changes and such, so. Uh, I wanna thank you for that, cause I know we've been moving forward that. I know y'all been in that grant probably a little over two years now, trying to get that approval and, and I look forward to it, cause I feel that we're really getting to the end of it, so. Uh, but Paul, I just wanted to thank you for his work.
Judge, judges, what did, what did Ascension Parish do to build their new courthouse in Gonzales? Did they just pay it out of their, 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 uh, was it a millage? Was it, did they go to the taxpayers? Or vote? I mean, how did they build that big facility? Cause that's look like about a thirty million dollar facility.
They had the Mississippi River, we know.
I mean, I'm, I'm just asking.
They got trial lawyers.
We did a user fee and it was, uh, we added an extra amount on every filing, so every civil filing, you can't do that with criminal filings. But every civil filing, uh, I, I don't remember the exact amount, I'll just say a hundred dollars, you know, for ease of figure. Uh, and so any civil filing that we had, we had this hundred dollars and we did a analysis over, uh, again, either three, five year period, I would, I forget to see what in the past, how much we made a month from filings and if we added this hundred dollars, what would that generate? And, you know, we were able to easily see what that would generate and then, uh, got that passed. You had to go through the legislature, you had to go through the Supreme Court, you gotta go through several things to get it done. Uh, and, and that's how we were able to do, uh, afford and fund that building. It was nothing through the parish or a town.
You still had to get a bond, right? It's just a bond.
Yeah, y'all bonded against the rubbery.
Yeah, we paid a note, you know, every month on it.
Okay.
We still had that user fee still going today and it's gonna go for, we don't know, next twenty years, thirty years, I forget what the notice, but, uh, yeah. And, but the issue with that is the Supreme Court, and I'm not sure if the legislature did too, but they, they shut that down. They haven't let people do user fees since then, and I don't know if they ever will again. I, I don't know.
And look, your civil filing numbers here wouldn't even be close to justified.
Right, obviously, I just see that, I mean.
That wouldn't work here.
Well, other funding source we can look at.
Well, Ashley said, she was, she was involved in St. James. She worked for financing St. James for many years. St. James built a new courthouse in twenty-ten, I believe, or new judicial building with new courtrooms and, uh, we just went for a millstone of orders in St. James and got it approved and that's what secures the general obligation bond on that courthouse. That's how, that's the approach that they had to take at St. James to do it.
And that might be the route to go. I mean, we haven't had for any taxes in, since I've been here for sure.
But you wanna kind of explain what you know about it?
Um, yeah, the bond that we did, it was not much, um, off of it. It depends on how much you wanna take versus how much your percentage is based, based on your ratings. All that has to be, you know, um, evaluated first to see exactly what you need to go out for, to see how much you're gonna get. Some people can average four percent. Some people might need seven percent, depend on your rating. Off of that, I think we went like at a quarter of a millage for it, because it wasn't that much. We also had some little money that we did to add on as well. Um, and I think Ascension, if I read correctly, they did the same thing. Their, uh, obligation bond, our certificate indebtedness, whichever way you have to go, it provides for it and every month, um, it's calculated off of how much. It might be a five thousand dollar note, it might be a fifteen thousand dollar note. Again, all that is based off of what you have on your rating and what you can get.
It's amortized over what period?
Uh, we did thirty years and then when we did a new one, we did twenty years. It depends again on what you're gonna do, what you're gonna see.
And I guess I'm asking that question because, look, I know it's tough to go to the public and get a bond passed. But if you, you probably need to run the numbers to see, cause if it's a quarter of a millage and it's gonna cost everybody, you know, thirty dollars more a year over a thirty year period, it might not be as hard of a sell than to go say, I need a four mil bond or something.
I'm saying that's gonna be a problem there, uh, according, because certain people is paying the millage. If we go to a sales tax, it may be easier to pass.
Who would initiate that?
The judge, I guess.
First, see a sales tax.
When you go, when you go the route of a millage, not everybody's paying. So then you have a lot of.
They always pass sales tax. I think they already out there.
The maximum. Everybody's paying on a sales tax.
Look, I guess until, until, until you know what, what you need to fund and try to build, everybody's just talking hypotheticals at this point. Right? I mean, so at some point, you gotta get to, if we are talking about a new facility, is it gonna be phased? Is it gonna be to attempt to go build it all at once? What it would cost and then figure out what your ask is, and then you gotta go figure out if there's a way to get it. But until you know what your ask is, I don't know if you're really gonna get anywhere.
Is anybody going to Washington anytime soon?
Next month, we're going.
That would be the place to start. With your congressman. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to help.
So we've had several conversations with, you know, state and, um, local reps, Chad Brown, Senator Alain, um, Clay Shex Snyder, to name them two, had conversations to build capacity. We have people who are willing to explore avenues and they're listening to us, so, you know. I think we keep, keep the conversations going and just keep, keep it abreast to them as well, so that, you know, we can just.
I think our land would be very useful for us.
If there is any funding or any funding source, and I'm thinking outside the box. I know what, what Donaldsonville did, uh, there was some RA money, uh, recovery act money. And they did it under a emergency phase for their gas lines, infrastructure, because gas was coming out of the pipes, which expedited the funds and cut a lot of the red tape where they were able to get the funds to go ahead and improve all their gas lines within the city of Donaldsonville. Would that apply to us from an emergency standpoint and looking at what our courthouse, the structure of our facility is as of now? If there's any funding to see if that would cut, I'm just thinking outside the box.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, but I don't.
Good thinking.
I just use.
The American Recovery Act, you don't have to apply for, we already have those funds, but we have them designated for our sewer.
Well, what they?
So it's not like they got it expedited. Most parishes received that, the funds in at night.
It might be another name. I, I, I probably got the name wrong, but it was something they did, emergency.
And I would think that's gonna depend, be contingent upon the funding source and what they're requiring.
And, and the other thing, maybe Melissa, you can comment on this a little bit. The, the senators and representatives may put something in capital outlay, but once it gets to facility and planning services and we have to deal with their rules, just because the senators and reps say you can do this, doesn't mean you can do it.
Sometimes it's not true.
They're gonna say it's a hundred percent funding and I promise you when I get the paperwork, there's a match on it.
Right, then in addition to the match, now they require.
A lot of red tape.
What's the percentage maintenance that they add to it now?
I wanna say, was it, was it twenty-five percent? I wanna say it was twenty-five percent.
I think it ended up being twenty-five, but it's like, like so much percent for so many years and it adds up to twenty-five percent that you have to have allocated.
New ones, you have to have it set aside, the money, you have to put a certain amount set aside every year to show that you have the operations and maintenance money to, to continue to improve the facility that they gave you the money to build.
Well, once you improve it, you're not gonna have all this downtime maintenance, spending money on that. So, yeah, it would be worthwhile looking into.
So at the end of the day, if we decide to design a multi-government complex, get in, get an architectural designer involved to blueprint a building so we know the exact cost of this facility, y'all three be interested in sharing the cost on that?
Yeah, per, per capita, I mean, the, what, what.
A third, a third, a third.
Yeah, I, I can't tell you what percentage I can pay, all pay, if I can pay at all. But yes, I would be willing to put some money into that.
Just for the design. We're gonna go to Washington, ask for money, we're gonna ask for two million when it's a twenty-five million dollar project, you follow me? I think all our Ts and I's gotta be crossed with what we're asking for, correct?
And I think you also have to look at, do you, and, and like, I think we all agree that one facility from a construction cost and all, obviously is most economical, right? But also I think you can look at, do we look at that and do we look at what's our immediate needs to phase in those buildings? I mean, you know, the, the first building that we said would go there hopefully is OEP building in Grant, right? That, that was the first building we talked about, because that grant was in the process. Do you? It, it, my immediate need in my office isn't the immediate need that God hasn't hit, right? So can you phase it in? So do you do your design as one complex? Or do you do your design in saying if I gotta build a courthouse with two courtrooms and a jury room and judges' chamber, and that's what I need right now? Then do our designing for that and then court's office is the next one, I said, you know, and do it in pieces based on what is available. Uh, because not everything may be available, but I would hate to see us say, well, we gonna build a twenty-five million dollar building. That's what we're looking for. And ten million comes over and we say, well, it's not twenty-five million, so let's move on. I think we also wanna, we wanna look at that ten million, see what can we get out of that ten million.
Sure, I agree.
Uh, you know, you're keeping that in mind, uh. The, the, the property is five and a quarter acres. Y'all can do, you know, whatever y'all think we need to do with it. I'm good. I mean, that's what it is.
All right, that's just for another discussion, but that's something really delicate, so, you know. If we're gonna chase the money, we gotta know how much we chase. Bottom line.
Right.
So for the capital outlay, uh, request that was put in, we had a preliminary estimate brought in, uh, I don't remember who we obtained it from. Do you know, Paul, the? Cause we had to submit.
We had this, after our last meeting, we had that discussion where, uh, the legislature, y'all had spoken to legislators and they had told us to submit a capital outlay application.
Yeah.
And I wanna say that the jury had approved some money to have some preliminary designs done so that we had something to submit as part of that application, but I don't remember who actually prepared it.
I think South Central Planted helped with that.
But I thought we had somebody give us a design estimate, like a designer, a designer give us an estimate.
I want the files.
It might have been, it might have been. I can't, I don't think you were here for that meeting.
I don't think we ever got any design in hand. That's been posed issue all along, no sign in hand.
No.
But I wanna say that meeting that I was here in your place, the jury had actually approved some money for us to be able to do that.
See, if you go back to the minutes and see.
You speaking of like a conceptual design of the whole property, correct?
Correct, yes.
Different phases and that type of thing.
Yes.
No, I don't, that, no, none's been done.
And that's something with, with, you know, build, have a plan or something. Phase one, phase two, phase.
South Central Planted did provide the estimate for that though. That's how we, that's how we got it through capital outlay. They submitted into, into capital outlay for us.
I guess I was involved in that conversation. I don't remember that.
Preliminary, well, I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to.
It could be, because I know it was just preliminary.
Plan that I'm aware of, and it was, um, it was on paper, but it was a very scaled down thing, kinda because we were being told that we had to have something to present when you ask for funding.
Mm-hmm.
And so, yes, we do have something from the EDG.
Okay.
The toilet's bubbling over and it stinks now and the, just got a message.
If I could, going on, kinda adding to what Mr. Alco was saying, kinda thinking out of the box. I think at one of our past meetings, we had even talked about, is there any potential to go to the, the. is there any potential to go to the lieutenant governor's office about maybe making the old courthouse a potential, you know, museum or something like that, and maybe there's some additional funds that way? And no, no one ever acted on it, but we had talked about it. So, that may be kinda thinking outside the box along with, with what you were saying earlier that, that may be another route that's available that, I don't know if we can go or we can't, but that may be an additional source that could be out there.
I think that came up because of, um, some concerns about maintenance costs. If we do go forward with a new facility, then how do you maintain all of it, what we have now and what we will have?
There is a historic preservation fund. We had utilized in St. James Parish before, when we did our welcome center.
We've used that with this courthouse.
Yeah, you can use some of it. It's not a lot, but it's something.
I want you, maybe you can look into that historic preservation, see if they have anything currently available.
Cause that's why we renovated the whole courtroom, I think.
So there's a couple, moving forward, there's, there's a, seems like there's a couple of things that, that we need to continue, uh, to push. We need to look at, start looking at alternative sites if we have to go that route. We need, I think we need to at least include this monthly to have a recap where we're going as pertains to the renovations of this courthouse and where we're going. But I think we need to stay engaged with it and try to see how we can continue to move the ball as fast as we could.
So we get updates twice a month in your damn report, courthouse renovation.
We need to make that an item on the agenda at least once a month.
It is. It is.
It ain't been much. It ain't been much. It ain't been much.
It's a slow moving tumbleweed.
Yeah, the, the, the only other thing that I, you know, I wanna bring up that I think the jury's gonna have to consider, you know, if we get awarded that item four on here and have the, the O E P and nine one one center built and funded, that's gonna free up like thirty-five hundred square feet on the second floor of the old jail here. Right? And I know Jamie and I and, and Brian, we went walking earlier this morning and Jeff, if, if anybody wants to go see what we're talking about there, there's quite a bit of space that's gonna be freed up that could be renovated and address the security concerns and, and all the other issues with the existing courthouse. You know, and I think that's gonna, it's gonna have to be a, a, a cost benefit analysis done on it to see if it's, you know, do we spend five or ten million dollars renovating this whole complex and getting it top notch? Or do we spend twenty-five million down the road, but we still have this maintenance item here that we have to worry about, you know? I, I, I just think it's something that we need to look at and I would like to see whenever our architect gets involved with it, they've already scanned, well, the, the, the architect that's doing the job now, he's already scanned the courthouse side. If they could scan this side and see how they could use that space and come up with a plan, you know, I think that's something that we just need to consider, how much that would be to renovate this old space and, and have a nice facility. Uh, the whole, the whole idea, whenever we had them do the structural evaluation was determine if the bones of the courthouse is good enough for us to rebuild on. And, you know, kinda in a way, I was hoping that they come back and say, look, it's beyond repair, you need a new one, cause then we have a reason to go get new money. You know, and what they told us is that, look, it's gonna cost less than you think to restore it to where it needs to be. So it's kinda hard for us to move forward with a new courthouse, knowing that the old courthouse is not, I guess, uh, that it can be salvageable, I guess is the thing. And that's just something that we're gonna have to look at as, as an option going forward. I just wanna make sure I, I put that out there so everybody knows what's, what's gonna be on the table.
I just think when, when you start busting down walls, opening things up, you're gonna find more problems than what you're seeing right now. And for the, right now, you know, what we're dealing with, we need to look at, even if we take Wayne Cat off his, Aaron off his and move him in a smaller part of the community center and keep the big part open for right now. But we need to start looking at ideas and get these people out of these conditions. I mean, waiting on going for money, yeah, we're gonna still go after the money, get something done, but what do we do right now?
Nothing, I've said it's been contrary to that though. I, I don't see, I mean, everything we've talked about is going in that direction.
My question is, how much faith do y'all have in that assessment? Cause like Chris is saying, you know, I know they can't go in every nook and cranny, but to me, from just based on what I'm seeing, from the assessment that was sent out, it looks like they went in the obvious places.
Well, the only thing I can say to that, we hired a professional to come in and give us their profession, their licensed architect, that's their job, they're supposed to do that. He had a structural engineer come in with him. If our maintenance guy would have done the assessment, I'd say I have very little confidence in it.
The communication though, was it strictly like focused on the courthouse, stairwell area, or was it like courthouse?
No, it's total, total.
Complete building.
It was total, the total.
And this person is saying that a few million dollars is a better route to go than renovating that building and that'll accommodate courthouse, security needs, their needs. That's what that person's saying? Cause I haven't seen this document. I'd like to take a look at it.
No, I'm not saying that someone's saying, I'm just saying from us knowing what's the space available there. So, all you're familiar with is on the other side where the judge's office is and all of that. After we're done here, if you wanna go take a walk in there and, and I can show you the floor space that's going to be available once the O E P nine one one center is built.
How does that side connect to our side? How do we use that as a cohesive building?
There's a common wall, cut a doorway. And I think they can be two-
Cut a doorway?
I, I think they can be, well, the doorways have been cut already in other places, so I don't think it's impossible to do what we're talking about there. That's why it's gonna take an architect to tell us how you can do it, but I think we can utilize the old jail cells that are existing now as holding areas and have completely separate corridors for the inmates to come through versus the, the judge's side.
I would like for y'all to come and take a walk after, just to get a feel for what we, we're talking about.
Um, is, is everybody clear on the immediate needs, items getting covered? I, I just wanted you all to understand that we're working in a direction for the, with the money that we have to fix Kat's problems, to fix Aaron's problems, but these are all allotted dollars. So is everybody clear on that, what's already been discussed? We have to, so we understand the two hundred thousand dollars drainage, sewage, restrooms, that's already gonna be put out for bid. The architect, the engineer that was on the phone is saying that we should have that completed, and again, this is an estimate, so just don't hold us to it by February seventeen, twenty twenty-six. That's when he feels the restrooms, the sewage and the drainage issues, if, if they don't incur anything new, that those items will be resolved, okay? Though that's the two hundred thousand. The eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, that's the R C I P funds, that's for the overall structure of the old courthouse. So what's gonna happen is, once that R F Q comes back, we're gonna be hiring a design professional to walk the halls again. So the initial assessment was just to give us an idea of what we were looking at from the beginning. This is go, that's bare bones. This is going, going to be a deeper dive. So I've already talked to the new parish manager, once they're on site, they are going to go to each individual office, the registrar, the assessor, the clerk. Make sure that you are with them when they're walking to point out all of these additional problems. But just because they gave us a number in the beginning of six hundred thousand, all of a sudden, if we only have eight eighty-five, if we're adding all sorts of things on top of it, that could jump to two million dollars pretty quick. So again, we're gonna try to say, look, we're gonna try to cover all of these issues. However, we're gonna do our best to make this money stretch as far as we can. Those are the items that are moving now. I just can't say as far as that five million for O E P, because we haven't been guaranteed those dollars yet. That's when we talk about the design phase for a new governmental complex, if that's what the, the jury decides to do in, in coordination with everybody that's here. That was the major objective of this meeting, was to say we're moving in a direction that we're trying to be comfortable with, but that we need everybody's help to offer. Everything that you offered today, we appreciate and we need more of it. But everybody that has ideas, we need somebody to put those ideas into force. So like Judge Martin said, if there is a, an architect, if we wanna get self-central planning involved, we need a point person to handle this because everybody in this room is stretched thin. And we are all trying to do what we can with the time and the money that's on the table. So if you have any ideas about that, not only with the design money that's gonna be spread around, and hopefully, uh, uh, Jeff Nowcan brought up, if we get a design professional, also how do we get a consultant that maybe takes this over the goal line for us? Because I don't think anybody in this room is gonna be able to do it on their own. And it is all hands on deck, but we do need a consultant of some form that's really gonna go after these funds and, and see what's available in other areas of the parishes that have already worked through this and help us in the same way to guide us through this process. So any questions on any of that, that, that we covered? Yes, yes.
Whatever got us here, I appreciate everybody just being here and taking it down for us, all to discuss it as a group. I think we've been working towards this and there's a whole lot of moving parts, you know, all over the place where nobody's, nobody knows what's determined yet and nobody can say, just because there's so many unknowns right now. But this is obviously the first step with us all getting together, all talking about it, trying to hash out the issues and I think this needs to happen. Think like you and Mr. Blanchard, Mr. Alcoon say more and Mr. Carter, just if we can do this more, I think all of us working together would make it move that much more quickly and hopefully that much more efficiently.
So outside of the regular police jury meetings where it's on the agenda, is there any other logical way besides having to inconvenience everybody for an in-person meeting where we can all stay abreast to timelines and next steps?
I just don't know who the point person is. That's, that's my issue, guys. I'm being honest with you. I, I just don't know who that is.
Can we form like a subcommittee?
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna recommend to, yes.
State holders in the building, a couple judges that would meet, we come up with some, whether it's monthly, every couple weeks, I don't know, and then we can submit reports or whatever to the whole jury, again, a monthly report or or quarterly, you know, again, whatever.
I think that's wonderful.
Yeah, we all meet every six months or so.
Yeah, that's a good one, yeah.
Um, again, I defer to the jury on that. If you wanna set up a, a, a separate committee, uh, that'll be on our agenda. The courthouse renovation projects are always on the agenda. We try to give updates, but again, they're, they're slow to come out and you guys know that. So everything that we provide, you know, every two weeks, that's all we know. Uh, but as far as pushing this and, uh, looking at the available spaces like you guys are gonna do after the meeting, as well as going to look at the community center, see if that may work for court in the future and other things, um, I, I think a subcommittee probably, probably makes some sense, but I'll, I'll defer to the jury on that.
Let, let me ask you this question. So, obviously everybody's in this room and we had issues, and it seems like we're reacting to a lot of issues. What is the best procedure to be proactive, to take care of some of this stuff before it gets to the point that we talked about is health and safety concern? And, and for example, I guess if Aaron's been having problems with her floors for years, should Aaron come to y'all at this time of the year and say, hey, look, I need y'all to allocate some money in next year's budget to change out my floors, cause I'm having issues? Um, or, or things that we may see that needs to happen in the courts. I can tell you one example, as we talk about the infrastructure of the building, the sound system in there is absolutely terrible. The court reporters complain about it all the time. It's only a matter of time before we have a criminal trial and that gets overturned because something happens and we don't have a transcript or something. So at some point in time, that stuff gets outdated and it has to be addressed. I mean, do we come to y'all and say, hey, look, y'all need to start looking in the future of updating the sound system in this thing, so next year's budget or the year after that, you know, you can allocate funds for it, versus waiting for it to break and then say, hey, we gotta find-
I, I think you're absolutely right, because if somebody doesn't come to let us know, we don't know, because we're not in that.
What's the process for that? Is it getting on the agenda and bringing it above?
No, it doesn't.
Conversations over the years.
And you don't even need a work order, but I mean, just a heads up, we're talking about the equipment for instance, hey, it's on its last leg. Maybe we can start getting some prices, and that's how we have to start, we have to start prices and seek, seek funding sources before I would even bring it to these guys. If you come to a meeting and, and, and spin your wheels here, the guys are gonna look at me and say, okay, Kim, get some prices. We can, right, we can do that beforehand, and then when it comes to, okay, y'all ready to spend some money, here we go. And, and, and I'm gonna be quite honest, and I guess it's a fault of every single one of us sitting up here. Um, when Mr. Trish was here, Mr. Trish was a little bit more proactive in doing things in the court system, in the courthouse. Um, and we used to have money in the budget annually to take care of minor repairs here and there, and, and we have slacked on that. We have. So, so now we, now we're, now we're more reactive than ever being proactive. And it's an old building and it's getting older and it requires ongoing, probably a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Because, when you say that, Kim, I'm saying, that's because some of, of our employees are not being held accountable. It's not just us up here. It goes further down.
Well, it's up to us to hold them accountable.
It's up to some of these guys that sit up here is to hold them accountable.
I think you can put a small amount of blame on, on some of the workers, but that building needs a lot of-
And this has just happened in the last two or three years.
Well, and, and you're absolutely right, and Ms. Erin's talking about our floors, but it doesn't make sense for us to go and change our floors if we still have a water problem.
Potential hazard of employee getting hurt, yes, we change out the floors.
Not, no, we, not that we don't not change out the floors, but don't we have to fix the water problem first? Otherwise the water's gonna still be on the new floors?
If the cheap floors would have been put in to begin with, I mean, we can, you know what I mean? Now, now it's causing more money because the floors were replaced before my time. But at the time, it, it couldn't be the ceramic tile or whatever that was water resistant, so every little spot of water that gets put on there, so now when you put things replaced again, so that's, to me, it's just a matter of, it costs more money in the long run when you put things on. The longer it takes to get these repairs done, the more it's gonna cost.
Oh, totally agree.
Brian, if I could ask you a question, the, the area that has the five inch say, is that the area that's causing the main concern in the assessor's bathroom?
Yes.
I would have to say yes.
Yes.
All right. Is that something that we could address sooner?
But he's getting, uh, he's getting the bubbling right now, cause they're still cleaning the lines out. That's why he's getting back, but yes, we have to bust that-
To do is cut that section of cement out and replace that-
My point is, is the other project won't be done for six months. Is there something we can do in the next week or two weeks to fix this issue?
Plum contract that'll cut it and-
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm at. I don't wanna wait six months. I don't want, I don't wanna get another phone call in two weeks saying the toilet's messed up again. If there's something that we know where it's at, and we can just go fix it.
If we're gonna make that recommendation, can I just go, I, I, we're just, we're gonna bust the cement underneath the carport right here, what are we talking about? We just soon bust it all the way to the outside. Cause it's all, it makes that you, we're just soon-
We're just trying to fix the troublesome spot.
Right.
We don't wanna create more work than what we have to, cause the rest of it's in this other project.
All right.
I just think we, we-
I'll get with a plumber tomorrow.
Just fix this section where it's-
I'm gonna get with a plumber tomorrow, to see if we can cut it out. We have one that we use.
You're right, why you waited till Kat walked out to throw him that bone?
Can we, can we try to establish a subcommittee before one of our regularly scheduled meetings on a Wednesday? And then that way, maybe not before every meeting, but maybe the second, the second meeting of the month. And then that way we can kinda be all hands on deck and know that this is a scheduled meeting, we have something to report, we reported, if not, we can just keep it down the road or I, I think it'll be something that's useful, and I, I don't wanna continue to delay this. I mean, we have everybody here that's providing their time and energy and I think we have to capitalize on this now, and if we're able to do that, I would really like to, if we can appoint some of the jury members uh, to attend, and of course, I'll be there, and I'm sure the clerk and sheriff and everybody would, would, would like to attend as well.
I think a name would, it'd just be the judicial committee. Well, cause I, I, I don't think it's limited to just a courthouse, cause there's other issues that I know we're gonna have to talk about. So I know, I mean, I'll be on it by default. Any other volunteers?
Mike, it's a carpenter. Carboni engineer.
And Chris wants to. And we'll try to, we'll try to hold that, um, again, on maybe the, our second meeting of the month.
Second meeting of the month, the first committee meeting, so at four o'clock.
That, that'll be fine, or if we wanna just do it, we can even do that before, if, if you wanna do it at three o'clock before, you know?
We need other members, if it's just gonna be jurors, then we just-
I mean, I would be happy to.
Could be some of our judges too, huh?
Yeah, we're gonna-
Okay, Judge Turner.
Uh, keen, but we'll, you know, possibly have other judges come.
Judge Turner, Judge Verdi.
Oh, whatever, two judges.
Okay, two judges, well, at least two judges will show.
Aaron, Sheriff.
I would be happy to.
Leave Kat out of this for a while. Let him settle down.
You told him this perfectly, didn't you?
Yeah, it'd be great.
Just to kinda build on what Jamie was talking about earlier, I don't know if this, maybe we could do for temporary purposes, the courtroom, but I might be mistaken, but I think it was in Judge Verdi's while he was holding court one time. It may not have been before, ceiling tiles that actually failed during court, I wanna say. And that's, but the last thing we wanna do is put the public at risk or, you know, anybody that's in there, so I don't know if something could be hit rarely done, just to shore it up, so make sure, you know, God forbid, while we are having court, part of the ceiling doesn't fall on, you know-
And I think, J- Judge Turner, you're correct. And, and once we get that design professional that's gonna be walking everything. We'll have them with us, with the parish manager. If there are things that we can fix right away, cause I mean, Aaron and I walked in the courthouse the other day and I'm not in court a lot, guys, you know that. Um, so we walked up the steps and there's that yellow tag, the tape that's been there for a year and a half, you know, longer. Um, we could easily start vacuuming things and, and picking up little wood pieces and, and, and band-aiding as best we can. To make sure that these aren't safety issues for the public and I think that's something that we gotta get on. So I, I think once we have that about design professional, I think that's something we'll do immediately. Uh, and fix the things we can fix in-house and then the rest of it, we'll, we'll attach to that R C I P fund.
Fan blade of mine on TV.
Fan blades?
We don't usually use the fans unless the AC's not working, which happens.
So I guess the question was on that too. I don't know if it was ever answered. If they have issues like that, do they report it to the parish manager? Do they report it to Kim?
Order to Mr. Res.
Never heard of, uh, that's the first time I ever heard of that.
We, we put a ticket in, like if some, you know, ceiling tile or something like that.
Have some ceiling tiles recently fell, Judge? Because we were, we were on scaffolding not long ago and actually the section in the back where you walk into the courtroom.
That's what I was referring to.
Is it, is it hasn't fallen recently, cause they.
I don't wanna put words in Judge Vergey's mouth, but I think it was, what, a couple months ago?
It was a while, that, that hasn't happened recently.
Cause we actually got up, that's one of the inspection ports that we went through roof to take pictures of the attic area. So we had to come back and staple everything and we changed that section out while we were up there.
Like, again, no, nobody wants any of this to be happening anyway. So I, i- if, if we're made aware of it, hopefully we can try to fix it in-house. If we can't, we'll do our best to get it done as quick as possible. Um, and hopefully the money works out in the future, but that's gonna be a whole nother nut to crack.
I, I think that's it on the, the courthouse renovation part. What I'd like to do is, uh, ask my fellow juror to deviate. Because I would like to ask, uh, talk about another topic since the judges are here, uh, related to the criminal court fund and, and that budget. So you get a motion, Devo? Motion by Diaz, second by Pineville, all in favor? Oppose? Alright, so, um, for the criminal court fund. I know I've, I've spoken to a few of you about this before, but basically our total expenditures are three hundred and sixty-four thousand. Well, I'm, 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 I'm gonna speak about our, our budgeted for next calendar year. We're budgeting three sixty-four zero zero six, so three hundred and sixty-four thousand. And we're expecting a transfer in. Oh, I'm sorry, I went to wrong numbers. No, the, the transfer is in from our general fund will be a hundred and ninety-five thousand and the revenues collected two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
But the expenditures are four thirteen.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so the revenue's two twenty-five and the expenditures are four thirteen, nine fifty-eight. Uh, so our general fund is having to basically supplement that fund. Uh, the question that we've asked ourselves and we'd like to ask, yo, what can we do to? Increase the fines or something, why is it costing us more to have court than what we're receiving? And is that normal to other jurisdictions?
It was never designed to be a break even. I mean, if you go look at the statutes, it's the obligation of the judges, like everything else, y'all are obligated to do, to, to maintain the courses. So it's, it, it was never designed to be a break even number on it. I couldn't tell you, you know, Saint James, did it break even? I know Saint James normally puts a couple hundred thousand dollars in. Section the same way, right? I mean, that's standard across the board.
Yeah, it never breaks.
Essential supplements.
I can tell you Leroy, our criminal, just within my office, our criminal department is the most costly. Cause it has the most employees, it, it just, it's the most costly department. And we get no funding for, I mean, next to nothing for that. So it's the same thing. We had to take some of our civil costs and our salary. And just first it, just to cover my employees' salaries. So, I mean, I know it doesn't make you feel better, but. Reality of.
Yeah, most of those fines and court costs are everything except by statute, so.
And our court costs are in line with other parishes that I'm aware of and our fees and fines. So, you know, again. You would probably get eyes start looking at us if we were to hike that up. And probably get calls from the Supreme Court and other agencies to why, you know, isn't so high. I don't know if you can just do that, just to say, well, we wanted to have a balanced budget.
It don't have to be valid, but it could get close.
From the Supreme Court standpoint, the push is actually the other way. So, so we, we got obligated about two years ago through legislative act. That even if somebody has assessed fines and court costs, they're now entitled to a hearing to determine whether they're actually able to pay the fines and court. They can actually, they can actually agree to and be sentenced to a fine and court cost. And we have to have a hearing to determine whether or not they are financially able to afford fines and court costs. And if they aren't, then the remedy is either we have to reduce it, convert it to jail time or something else, which, you know, we converted to jail time because the sheriff wore it off because you guys. So I'm just telling you from the state level is that, that push is going the other way, not to up the fees, but to actually reduce the fees. For most of these injured defendants.
Uh, what about on the, and, and look, forgive me for being ignorant, I'm just asking. So from the, the expenditure standpoint, is there anything that could be done to basically not spend as much going through the court process? Logistics or something like that?
I definitely gotta see what the expenditures are.
You have like a breakdown of?
I know, I know. This is the biggest expenditure of the court orders that we have.
We have eighty thousand in salaries and benefits, but the court orders are two hundred and five thousand expected for this year.
And the court laws consist of what?
The court orders that the judges are ordering us to pay for the court system.
Transcripts, which we understand transcripts, I mean.
I mean, is that DA, public defender and everything that's included within those orders?
Yeah, but if those expanded orders that you have to pay for to pay for an expert. To evaluate somebody saying they're saying, you know, you gotta DA signs on that too. I mean, it's, those are just, unfortunately, normal operating expenses to operate a court. Point, attorneys appoint. Trying to think what else, yeah, transcripts. Have to have, again, in criminal cases that they're entitled to. Kind of paying interpreters, yeah, coming to court, they're not cheating, gotta have that.
But to answer your question, Larry, if you can give us a breakdown of what the expenses are, or the orders. We can take a look at it and see if there's something that's, that can be cut or something that's unnecessary or that's. You know, maybe, maybe we're paying for books that none of us use anymore. We may be able to cut that kinda stuff out, so we can take a look at it.
Um, I know we do have less law subscriptions that we pay for, you know, a couple of them.
Okay, let's. We're trying to, that, that fund is our fund that we're, we're negative bad and within a couple of years, we're gonna be.
For being a red.
Maybe we've got a civil, uh, civil, uh, court upstairs, maybe we've been. Sorry to people that soon have, have get awarded a, a rent for the courthouse.
Get a motion adjourned? Motion by Mr. Diaz, second by Mr. Pineville, all in favor? Oppose? Meeting adjourned. Uh, and if y'all like to go take a walk upstairs.